Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Embow, will you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Kuzick.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
There.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski. All present except Ms. Sarinski and Mr. Gofredo is on the phone.
Motion approved this July 6, 23 meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Since we have no one who signed up for the courtesy of the floor, I would ask if there's anyone who would like to address counsel, now's the time to do it. If you plan on doing it, you have five minutes. If not, we will move on. Mr. Executive, it's your show at this point.
Good evening, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. President, could you come down here with me for a very special and solemn occasion? Mr. Joshua Robinson, President, would you please approach Ms. Lillian J. Robinson, Mr. Charles Dickerson, Ms. Tracy Springer, Ms. Jean Brown, Mr. Marvin Boyer, Ms. David Moore, and Ms. Kendra Dura? Please come forward. Counsel, the executive board of the Eastern Pennsylvania chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People has asked to be sworn in to their offices in your august presence because they believe it brings a solemnity to the occasion that they otherwise wouldn't have. So thank you for indulging us in this. Thank you, Mr. President, for helping us honor them. Please raise your right hand. I solemnly swear to discharge to the best of my ability
I solemnly swear to discharge to the best of my ability.
the responsibilities of the office in the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. The responsibilities We'll start over again. Take your time. Let's start over. It's good to see you without your camera. I solemn, repeat after me, I solemnly swear to discharge to the best of my ability the responsibilities of the office in the NAACP in accordance with its constitution and bylaws and the decisions of its governing bodies. I dedicate myself anew to its principles of equality and justice under law of equality and justice under the law. I shall always try to keep the goals of the NAACP above any purely personal or individual interest that might hinder the attainment of these goals. I ask the continued help of Almighty God in keeping this pledge. Counsel, President Myers has your certificates. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, so I'm going to share a little bit of more happy news. Our Director of Human Services.
Tara? Have you joined the meeting?
I am on the phone. I have been.
Okay, thank you.
It's okay. Are we ready?
Yep.
Congratulations. The ebook you contributed to has now been published on Springerlink, our content platform, which offers customers and library patrons access to your publication at their workplace, home or wherever they want to read it. Readers who prefer a printed edition of your book will be able to order it from Springerlink shortly. We are very proud that our Director of Human Services, Ms. Susan Wondolowski, is a published author. Now, she contributed a chapter in the book Innovative Methods in Child Maltreatment, Research, and Practice: Advances in Detection and Causation and Prevention. Congratulations, Susan. Now, some, you know, not great news. As we know, we had rain last Sunday. That was not 500-year rain, not 1,000-year rain. It was biblical rain. And I think the best way to report to you about where we're at is to give you our most recent assessment from the emergency managed services folks. So, under public assistance, we continue to work with municipal officials to gather accurate and detailed public assistance damage assessments. That's assessments to the municipalities and individual homeowners affected. We have requested that municipal officials provide the cost to repair their damages by 11:00 a.m. on Friday, July 20. Upper Mount Bethel has enacted a disaster declaration with their municipality. Currently, 10 municipalities have reported municipal damages. Bangor Borough, infrastructure and roadways; County of Northampton, bridges; East Bangor Borough, roadways; Forks Township, infrastructure and roadways; Lower Mount Bethel Township, roadways; Palmer Township; Plainfield Township, infrastructure, roadways; Stalker Town Borough, parks and recreational trail; Tatumie Borough, municipal park; Washington Township, infrastructure and roadways. Municipal disaster declarations on 7/17 Bangor Borough, on 7/16 Lower Mount Bethel Township, on 7/18 Plainfield Township, on 7/20 Upper Mount Bethel Township, on 7/17 Washington Township. Preliminary damage cost estimates. These are cumulative damages. Now, we are in the very early stages of assessment because so many of the municipalities have not yet reported to us. So that's important to remember. And it's also important for our municipalities and individual homeowners and business owners who are affected to make sure they make the report, okay? Because the state and federal governments play an outsized role in any potential disaster relief. The county has very few financial resources to address some of the tragic consequences. And I just am so grateful that we had no fatalities in this flash flooding because it was, it was so very severe. And we're just very grateful for that. But thus far, our accumulated damages are estimated to be $400,000 to $500,000 with multiple municipalities yet to report their estimated recovery and response costs. The estimated cost to date includes approximately $400,000 in damages to our bridges, county bridges. The 2022-2023 public assistance county and state threshold figures, this is what we must report to trigger the potential, to trigger the potential for a disaster declaration. We must document a minimum of $1,389,502.44 in public assistance damages. So, you know, with our bridges, we're significantly there, right? In addition, the Commonwealth must document all counties and state agencies a minimum of $23,4795 for any county or the Commonwealth to be awarded a presidential disaster declaration. So this isn't just us, it's Commonwealth-wide. We are continuing to enter individual assistance properties into the Pima Damage Reporter application. County Emergency Management has done a resident damage survey, and it was completed and went active yesterday. So this is online. This has been shared with municipal officials and on county social media so people can access it and get on and make their reports. Since the incident, we have collected reports of damages to over 105 residences within the county. Residential property damages have come from 10 municipalities. They are Bangor, Bushkill Township, Forks Township, Lower Mount Bethel Township, Nazareth Borough, Plainfield Township, Portland Borough, Stalker Town Borough, Upper Mount Bethel Township, and Washington Township. County Emergency Management continues to review the residential questionnaires and will follow up with those residents that have experienced major damages to their dwelling structure for appropriate damage designation. All assessments received by the agency have been or will be entered into the Commonwealth Damage Reporter system as information is received. Now, this is what the county does. This is how we help our people respond. State and federal information. Emergency management is in communication with both Pima, Eastern Area Office, and Pima's Bureau of Recovery and Mitigation. During the assessment period, which is this time period, the Commonwealth will monitor the Damage Reporter Program, which is the program emergency management personnel use to document each and every residential property damage and all public assessed damages. As the residential numbers climb and as the threshold numbers get closer for public assistance, Pima will then communicate to the governor's office and/or FEMA to make it known that the joint preliminary damage assessment, joint PDAs, are needed for FEMA. Emergency management has been in contact with Pima, and they can see what the damages we have experienced are based on the information that has been entered into the Damage Reporter system. Pima will communicate with FEMA if warranted. So that's what's going on with respect to the, you know, historic severe flash flooding that we've had in the county. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Well, how long before we hear from Pima or FEMA? You had no way?
Could be weeks.
Sorry, wasn't there just a road in Lower Salkin today that was declared?
Yes.
Just today?
Yes.
So they aren't included in that because it just happened?
We don't have most of the municipal information. So we think we're
So there's, there's going to be more?
We believe we're going to make our threshold of the $1.3 million. And I was, I forgot. The county has reacted very quickly. So Little Creek Road, which we're all familiar with, but also in the context of several P3 bridges were done on Little, and there was some damage to our bridges. And we have acted expeditiously and with the emergency authority granted us in the charter and in the administrative code to repair, to make the initial repairs to Bridge 185 to keep it open so folks on Little Creek Road in that section of it can get in and out. There's an emergency contract which I have signed, which I have forwarded to Ms. Embow to give to the President so that we can get those emergency repairs moving and keep that bridge open.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Executive.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I'm going to just take a moment to acknowledge and thank Mr. McClure for involving me in this swearing in of the NAACP. And to you folks, I am truly honored to be a part of it. So we're going to move on to old business. Public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordinance Amending Northampton County's Administrative Code 17 Standard on Ethical Conduct. Mr. Heckman, would you introduce the ordinance?
Certainly. You've all had and seen all the information that was in the administrative code, that which was struck and that which was written in its place to be added. There's a few pages. I'm not going to really get into that. We can talk about that if you'd like. But I will read the therefore. Now, therefore be it ordained and enacted by Northampton County Council that the Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 17, Section 1706(c), shall be amended to read as indicated hereafter. Sections marked with bold underline have been added and sections marked with strikeout have been deleted. And if you go through, you will see all the, what was deleted and the specific language about the conduct, limited exceptions, and so on. I, I understand, having gone through it and had a chance to really get into it and had a chance to speak to our solicitor about it, I understand and agree. I think that it certainly is what the executive intended, to put the charter and the administrative code in line on this section. At first, I was knocked back a little bit because it came out of nowhere to me. It was, all of a sudden, it was boom. And I didn't know if there was a specific problem. But I understand what he's doing, and it makes sense. So I'm, I'm fine. That's why I decided to introduce this. And I think that it, I don't think it really has any negative impact on any of the activities or functions of county council or any employees for that matter. So there you go.
With that said, it was introduced by Mr. Lot and Mr. Heckman on July 6 meeting. Do we have any questions or discussion on this matter? Yeah, it was a public hearing in July. Any questions from the public? If not, let's call for a vote. Counsel has, I already asked counsel, they had any discussion? No one said anything. We can call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo. Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to Northampton County Council Home Rule Charter, Article 5, District Attorney, to provide limits for a district attorney of Northampton County. Ms. Varyu Hefner and Mr. Kusak introduced this on July 6, 2020 meeting. We ask for public comment if there's any. Counsel discussion? Mr. Lot, you've been recognized.
Yes, I just, we spoke a lot about this and term limits the last couple of months, so I won't go into much. But my feeling has been term limits at a local level are not needed. I really think the district attorney's office is one that the voters should decide if they have a district attorney they like and doing a job, they should be able to keep them there. I think a lot of people look at that position as a career. I think we're taking away, you know, some people, that's their desire to become a district attorney. And if you give them eight years at that job, it's, it's not much of a, you know, something to try to go for if it's only going to last you seven years. But anyway, I just wanted to put it out there. I think this is probably the office at least should have term limits on, on county council. So thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Heckman?
Excuse me, I'm not going to be supporting it, but it's in line with my vote on counsel and, and the executive. I, I've said many times, heard it, but I'm more interested in the cash flow than, than the office itself. Campaign finance reform is way overdue at all levels. I mean, if I were to look at, if I were to look at where there should be term limits, I would probably say, certainly the state and federal. I mean, and any third mayor, exec, chief executives of any counties or third-class or higher cities, because once again, I follow the money. But having said that, and I, the reason I say that because I never believed in term limits. But I can understand the trust and faith in government is just really not out there anymore. And frankly, I think we've done it to ourselves, not indicting anyone individually or any party, but particularly at the state and federal level. I mean, people say I need to stay here because I learned a job, but then things stand still for decades. So I, I don't think the local, I do agree with Mr. Lot, especially like in our, I think at the local level, people have, especially this council, have rotated people all over the place, except for a few exceptions. And for the DA, I'm leaning on what he's saying. I, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing, but I just can't support it. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Varyu Hefner?
I'm not sure what order to do this, but I would like to propose an amendment to this. And I'm not sure if this is the time or if we need to wait till the discussion is over. But I would like to move this up to a three-year term limit, three, four-year terms. And I still think there's a Scrivener's error that there's a question mark instead of periods. So we have to make sure we take care of that. But I've discussed it. I've done a little research. I know that other counties in the state have this. And I hear what Mr. Lot's saying about some people do choose this as a career. But I also think that sometimes the wrong people end up in the, in the spot. And yes, it's up to the voters to remove them. But if you ask the citizens of Philadelphia, they don't have a mechanism to get rid of theirs right now. And there's a lot of trouble. So I think term limits, term limits would help. And I don't know that, my, I guess this is not a partisan issue, but it's a philosophical issue. I don't know that we need to make government our career. I think it's something that we do. It's public service. We do it because we want to serve. And, and I think that people can grow and move on from those positions. And so I do support this. But again, ideally, this isn't my decision or yours to make. It's our decision to let the people of Northampton County make. And so I would like to amend this and let me know when the right time to do that is.
I think after we've done the discussion, we can move for that. Is that right? Can I do it now? If she makes a motion, we take action. Are you making a motion now? Or you want to wait till discussion's over, Ms. Varyu Hefner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the term limit from serve more than two four-year terms to serve more than three.
Is there a second? Let's have discussion on that now, on the amendment that we're going to change it from two to three terms. Discussion's open with counsel.
I just wanted to chime in on the question mark issue. The reason why there is a question mark at the end is because this would be a ballot question.
Oh, okay. Sorry. There you go.
So the question mark
Thank you.
Does belong there.
So that I stand corrected. I thought the question was 2028.
I didn't teach English, but that's, that's my
I'm in my own question. Thank you.
That's a teacher in you, John.
Never die.
Any other discussion?
On the amendment. Yeah, I'm going to be supporting the amendment because any, any time added to the DA, I think is a, is a good addition. But I still won't be supporting the term limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Heckman?
I'll support the amendment. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, even though it's like Mr. Lot, I'm, I'm not supporting the overall decision. But sure, I mean, from two to three, I think three, to me, probably is better than, than two. But, so I will be supporting that as well.
Anyone else? I'm just going to chime in a little bit. Yeah, and discussions we had about this yesterday, I was the first to say we need to move it to three. And the more I think about it, I don't know if that's adequate enough because this could be somebody's personal goal in life to be a district attorney. And history can show us how long Mr. Morganelli was in it, that that's what he, that's what this is. But I have to understand, and I, and I hear what this lawyer, Varyu Hefner, said, with the situation in Philadelphia and the DA not exactly doing the job that he should be doing. So at this point in time, since I'm the last one who's going to talk, I think it's time for us to vote on the amendment that we change it from two to three.
Mr. President, I would entertain a friendly motion to amend my amendment if you want me to upgrade, if you really want to raise it. I'm not married to three. I just did it because I thought it was a good compromise. It's up to you.
You have to
Would I have to withdraw?
You would have to withdraw it.
Do you want me to withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay, I withdraw this motion.
Okay. Now.
I'd like to propose an amendment that we make it from two to four.
Terms.
Two to four, four-year terms.
Okay. Is there a second on that? I'll second it.
Thank you.
Discussion on the four-year, four terms. Nobody has discussion on it? Okay, then we can call for a vote on the amendment to four terms.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kuzick.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
No.
Motion passes by a vote of five to four.
Now, we're going to have the discussion on the ordinance as amended for terms. Is correct, am I correct with that? We can have discussion on that now. Tara, do you have anything to say since you're on the phone?
No, I'm pretty consistent with my vote. I'm going to vote no. I don't believe in term limits at this level. And I'm
Okay. Are you done? JP?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm going to support the 16-year limit. I think the DA is a special case. I agree that 16 years is plenty of time. And after that, I would love to see new, new broken additions. I will be supporting the amended resolution or ordinance.
Okay, any other discussion, any other council member, why are we sitting here? If not, let's call for a vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Lot.
No.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Tara, you want to repeat that? We didn't get you.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of six to three.
We're going to move on to old, to new business. Consideration of resolution appointing a county comptroller. Personnel.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that shall be confirmed to fill the unexpired comptroller vacancy at a salary of $65,000 effective July 21, 2023.
Candidates were interviewed yesterday at the Personnel Committee, which is July the 19th. Counsel, have you got any questions or comments at this time for the candidates? Now's the time to ask.
I have a question because last night it was raised at the meeting whether we would have someone here to swear them in or not. And Linda was going to follow up for us.
She has a follow-up for that, for you.
So could you tell us what happened?
Whoever is selected, I had talked to Nancy Jones in, she's the judicial secretary for Judge Dalli. He is available tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. in motions court. Or he is available Monday and, or Tuesday of next week. Aileen has the information to contact Nancy Jones if you are going to be, what day you can set up. If it's going to be tomorrow, you need to email her tonight and just let her know. So.
Thank you for that.
You can do it, Mr. Heckman?
Wasn't the, Jermaine, wasn't there a question as to whether an appointment that you may not even need to be sworn in?
Right. And it has been done. Bucky was not sworn in one time, but he was also sworn in one time when he was appointed. So
All right.
Just wanted to be clear.
Just to cover all bases, we're having them sworn in.
I have no problem with it, I agree. Just wanted to.
Okay. Any other discussion of questions at this point? All right, what we're going to do is we're going to have, I'm going to take nominations for candidate. Yes, Mr. Heckman?
Mr. President, I want to, first of all, offer my respect to the four individuals. It's, it's tough, you know, you get up in public and you put your name out there, and you know, you're opening yourself up, and that, it's difficult. You know, if you don't get selected, you just shouldn't take anything personally, or, but it's hard, it's easy to say that and hard to accept it. As someone who has put my name out there and failed a few times, and been told not to take it personally, I can accept the fact that it is, it is difficult. I believe everyone should, my feeling is, I think everyone deserves an upper, a thumbs up or a thumbs down. So I'm going to put in nomination the name of Scott Parsons. He has county experience, he understands the system. I think that this is a short-term position, so I think anything like that is a benefit. I, everybody came in here with ideas and thoughts, and, you know, I asked my questions, I knew Mr. Kuzick had his questions prepared, and you know, I, I don't think there's a bad choice, but I'm putting out Mr. Parsons' name. Thank you.
No, you don't need a second. No, you don't need a second. All right.
You need a second?
You don't have to vote, but you need a second.
All right.
Do we, or don't we need a second? We need a second.
I'm looking at Section 601 for a resolution. You do not need a second.
It's not a resolution, we're making a nomination.
We're making a nomination.
When we, when we do the president of council, we look at the nomination.
Think the second, thank you.
Is there a second for Mr. Lot? Mr. Lot's the second.
Mr. Lot can speak.
Mr. Varejao Hefner?
I'd like to nominate Narit Baron. I find her to be a person of great integrity. I think she has the most qualifications and experience for the job, and I think that she's quite professional, and I think she would leave her own personal beliefs out of the equation, and I think she can handle something for the short term.
Is there a second from council? If not, I will second it. Is there a nomination for anyone else?
I would like to make an.
Go ahead, Tara.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Knoppeoff for the position. I found her resume impeccable, she already has experience within the office, and I was impressed by her presence yesterday, and also the fact that she's active duty, she's a mom, she's made commitment to this office, and it is part of the honor of Bucky's memory that she's doing this, and I really admire that, and so I would like to put her name forward. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I would second that, and I'll just add, I think that it takes a lot of courage to step out of a career service position with no fallback. Not that you're not overwhelmingly qualified, but I think that took courage to do, and I applaud that, and I'll be seconding her nomination.
Okay. Any other nominations? With that said, we will close the nominations, and we will have the members now vote, call for a vote. Okay.
When you ask for the vote, I will need a name to be provided. Mr. Heckman.
Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Lot.
Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Myers.
Baron.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Narit Baron.
Mr. Zirinsky.
Sorry, Knoppeoff.
Mr. Brown.
Baron.
Mr. Kuzick.
Ms. Knoppeoff.
Mr. Giovanni.
Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Gofredo.
What's that?
Pardon me?
Mr. Baron.
Baron. Did you say Baron?
Yes.
Looks like we might have a three-way tie here.
Sounds like Peg's Florida phone.
Nope, we have four for Ms. Brown.
No parrots. So, you want to give what you have?
Okay.
There were four votes for Mr. Parsons, I mean, three votes for Mr. Parsons, four votes for Ms. Baron, and two votes for Ms. Knoppeoff.
We have to do it again, until we get to five.
Yes.
Correct?
Not filled unless you have five votes.
Excuse me. Five votes are required. So go around again.
We're going to keep going.
You go around again, see if anyone changes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Traditionally, what we would do is the lowest vote getter would be dropped, dropped off, and I think that regrettably, I will be switching my vote to Mr. Parsons. Not that I don't know and like Scott, but I will be changing my vote to support Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Giovanni.
Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Gofredo.
I'm going to, I'm going to keep my vote with Mr. Baron.
Mr. Heckman.
I'll keep my vote with Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Lot.
Scott Parsons.
Mr. Myers.
Baron.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Narit Baron.
Ms. Zirinsky. I'm sorry, Tara, yes?
Yes, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you.
I did like my nomination, I just want to say, you know, I recognize that we have to have a winner.
We're voting now, Tara. That's all we're doing.
I know, okay.
And Mr. Brown.
Baron.
There was five votes for Mr. Parsons and four votes for Ms. Baron, so Mr. Parsons is now the controller.
Now we're going to have to vote on the amended resolution. We will add Mr. Scott Parsons' name to it. So I guess I'll read it. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that Scott Parsons shall be confirmed to fill the expired controller vacancy at a salary of $65,000 effective July 21, 2023. Can I have a second on that resolution? We don't, we don't need it. Call for a vote? Call for a vote.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Parsons. You can make arrangements to get yourself sworn in. Damn, you got connections, huh?
He has a monkey.
Okay. All right, we're going to have, Consideration of Northampton County Executive's Appointment and Reappointments Resolution, Agency on Aging Advisory Council and Personnel Board. Ms. Varejao Hefner, would you please read the resolution?
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment reappointment as indicated hereafter. Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board, terms to expire 6/30/25. Reappointments of two honorary members, Ms. Mary Jane Long, Easton PA, and Mary Jane McAtier, Easton PA, term to expire is at 6/30/25. Personnel Appeals Board, Appointment Joe Capizolo, Bangor PA, term to expire 2/3/25. The above resolution was adopted, blah, blah, blah.
Discussion by council.
We were waiting to hear what an honorary member was.
We, oh, that's right, there was a question on the honorary thing. I'm sorry.
The bylaws of the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board require after serving three two-year terms, you must serve a term as an honorary member before you can then go back in the rotation as a member.
Mr. Lot has a question for you, Mr..
Does that eliminate your voting right?
I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCloy, for clarification. Mr. Brown.
In voting for the, on this, will we be voting the Agency on Aging separate from the Personnel Appeal Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, we're not.
I, I didn't, I didn't know you wanted them separated, sorry. Did you want them separated?
I would, yes.
One's Personnel and one's Aging. Oh, we have, we, they're both combined in one resolution.
We need a motion to separate them, and then we'll have to have two resolutions.
Okay, so I'll second for the purpose of his discussion.
Second on that? Okay, second. Discussion? Call for the vote on a change. Hold on a second, Linda, when you get ready, let me know. This is to separate them.
Point of, okay. Each one individually, we're going to vote?
Yes.
It's not each one individually, it's the two groups.
It's two different ones. One's Aging.
The Area Agency on Aging and the other one be Personnel, so there'll be now two resolutions.
All right, that's fine.
Okay. Hold the vote on the motion?
Vote on the motion to separate.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, now on the amendment, we'll do the first one, which is Agency on Aging. Is that correct? Let me know when you're ready. If there's any discussion, if there's not discussion, can we just go, anybody want to discuss this? Let's call for a vote, please.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
She said yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
No?
Yes, he said yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Now I have the second resolution on the Personnel Appeals Board. Any discussion? Whenever you're ready, we'll call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
We're going to move on to number four. Consideration of Administrative Code, no, we did the aging.
No, this is not a personnel request.
Oh, the personnel, okay. Consideration of Personnel Request Resolution Department of Human Services, Area Aging. I'm sorry, Ms. Varejao Hefner, would you read that?
Whereas on June 27, 2023, County Council received a memorandum of understanding with amendments to the contract between Northampton County and SEIU Local 668, PSSU, and whereas on June 27, 2023, County Council received a request to eliminate one part-time position of Aging Care Manager II, pay grade P S G R 35, salary $10,893, and to create one full-time position of Aging Case Aid II, pay grade P S G R 29B, salary $32,516, and the Department of Human Services, Area Agency on Aging Division. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Northampton County Council that the attached memorandum of understanding and the elimination and creation of physicians shall be approved on this 20th day of July, 2023.
Ms. Waldenowski, answered any questions? We didn't want this yesterday. Has anyone asked any questions for her? Any discussion from council? Let's call for a vote, please.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Consideration of Administrative Code 13, Contract Resolution, Vision Technology, Wilbur Schultz and Integrity Health. We're going to do Vision Technology first. Mr. Heckman, introduce the resolution?
Sure.
Mr. Emili's here, if there's any questions.
Yes, this is, we discussed these yesterday, but the resolution is, you want me to just do the therefore?
Just do.
Okay.
For that, yeah.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Vision Technologies. And the upper part, except for the amount, is pretty much boilerplate. See, an amount of $450,669.87 for hardware for disaster recovery refresh, and you have the procurement notice attached that gives you pertinent information, so it is hereby introduced.
Discussion.
Oh, by the way, Mr. Baron gave us an explanation of why we needed this, and that it's in a secret location, but it's not his basement.
Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky. Tara?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine to zero passes.
Wilbur Schultz. Mr. Heckman, introduce the resolution, please.
Sure. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Wilmer R. Schultz. It's the amount of $340,200 for the courthouse exterior wall and steps project, estimated timeframe of 105 consecutive days, and the procurement notice is attached, is hereby introduced.
Discussion. Mr. Kuzick.
Yeah, just quickly, I support this project, and I hope that this contractor does a good job, but the lack of a competitive bid process is what troubles me, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. JP.
I'm going to echo Mr. Kuzic, just that I will not be supporting this, although I do support the project in general. I think we need to be looking for answers to why we're not getting competitive bids, and I think looking at the responsible contractors on this might be one of those avenues. So I will not be supporting this.
Anyone else? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic. Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heck, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Adopted by a vote of six to three.
Integrity Health. Mr. Heckman, introduce the resolution, please.
Okay, on this one, I'm going to read the two paragraphs. Whereas on July 10, 2023, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving a contract in the amount of $3,724,711 for a term of five years with Integrity Health to be an employee healthcare provider. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Integrity Health. The procurement notice is attached, and we've discussed this, and the, excuse me, vigil from Integrity Health is here, pertinent individuals, so introduced.
Discussion by council. Mr. Giovanni.
The silent man will talk. I really struggled with this resolution, and I mean, I thank administration for letting me be on the committee for the RFP, and, but I really struggled with this. And the reason being is, when I struggle with something like this, to vote on it, I go to see an expert. And my expert is my wife of 45 years and 49 years in the healthcare business. She's been a critical care trauma nurse, and now she is a certified clinical nurse. So she looks at, what she does is, her job is looks at charts. And we're talking with her and really thinking about this really tough. You know, the problem with expensive healthcare is just no preventative care for the, for people. They have a cold or whatever they have, they end up going to the emergency room. Well, the emergency room is not staffed to handle all these people. And what happens is, yeah, there's a time lag because people have to wait there, because they triage the most important issues. If somebody's bleeding, somebody's having a heart attack, somebody got hit with a concussion, they all come before people that go there and use it for minor things. So with that being said, I know the new term for the clinic these days in 2023 is health center. So yes, the health center will probably fix some of these issues, but what we really got to do is educate people that you need to have a primary physician, you need to be having preventative care, not wait till you're really about ready to have something critical. Hypertension, obesity, diabetes, smoking, that's all important things that curtail your health. But nobody goes for preventative care until it's the last minute. So with that being said, I'm not going to support this. I think we need to teach people how to get preventative care. That's my call.
Anyone else? Mr. Lot.
Yes, I'm going to support this. Healthcare cost is, we really have not a lot of options. We talked about, you know, it'd be nice if there was more options. The options come down to cutting benefits for our employees, which we struggle to employ people, hire new people, keep people. This is a time in, the workforce right now is being offered more benefits by employers to get employees. I don't believe the right option is to reduce benefits for our employees. The other option is if we keep going down this road, it's ultimately going to raise taxes. I've been very proud to sit here for four and a half years under this administration with no tax raises and actually a tax reduction in one year. I don't know, that, from what I'm seeing and listening and hearing, we will not be able to maintain that if we don't get our healthcare cost under control. This is an option that has a track record out there. It is not, you know, this is an option, we can see how it works. This is an option that, at worst case scenario, if it doesn't save taxpayers money, it'll still be a nice benefit to employees, but I truly believe this is going to save us money, just like the tele-marketing or tele-doctor did. I believe this would work. I don't want to raise taxes, and I don't want to pull back benefits from our employees, so I will be supporting this as the option that is best for our community and our employees.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, I understand in actually listening to the comments made. Mr. Giovanni made great points. I know a lot of people in my age group, especially men, who don't go to the doctor until they're laying on a sidewalk or, you know, something like that. I know plenty of men my age who've never had a colonoscopy because they have some strange hangup or fear about it, and I told them the drugs they give you knock you out, that you should do it at least for the drug. But I don't advocate that unless you get a colonoscopy. But anyway, let me just put it this way. I don't know if this is going to work. I think they're taking a shot at something money-wise, because honestly, there's no sure thing in life, except one thing, and we all know what that is. So everything else is a crapshoot. Sometimes the odds are on your favor, sometimes they're not. But that being said, I think people know, I've talked to the council members, and I've said this publicly, the biggest problem we have is wages. And I've spoken to Mr. Lot about this. I know we say money isn't the answer, but that's usually said by people who aren't worried about the money. I mean, you don't hear people who get paid say money isn't the answer. We're competing with everybody, warehouses, retail places, and our starting salaries need to be adjusted. You know, when we first started all of this, the county had a pay structure, it had classifications, it had steps, and then you'd have COLAs. And I'm not blaming this administration, this was a lot of administrations and a lot of councils let that sort of slide. So now we have this, I don't know what you would call it a rock tumbler of how we do wages, you know, COLA, yes, maybe, no, somebody gets a step, sometimes, yes, no. And we really need to go back to that. And one of the problems that we have with the unions, the people that negotiate the contracts are usually veteran people. And I was, I was on a negotiating team down in Philly. You're looking out for yourself in many ways, not the people walking in the door. We need better starting wages, and if you keep people long enough to when they're vested, then they're going to start thinking about giving up a pension, they're going to start thinking about the benefits and that. But young people today, I mean, I hear it all the time, they can't afford a house, they can't, y'all are unaffordable housing, that's going up everywhere, and they can't afford vehicles. So I, I'm hoping that this, in lieu of that, is an incentive, and it helps the employees. I think ultimately, we're going to have to do more, but maybe, as you said about primary care, going here, somebody may pick up on the idea of, well, I'm not paying, I'll go, needing to get tests done, and needing to go for regular checkups. So that's why, you know, I'm supporting it. I hope it works with the money. I guess we'll see if it passes. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Brown? Got anything to say? Ms. Kuzic?
Just briefly, I'm glad that we went through the RFP process. I think that that's something that should have been undertaken from the get-go. I'm willing to give this a shot. I mean, five years, if it works out, if we save money, if the employees like it, then council can re-up the contract, it can be bid out again. But I think to just shut it down and say no and to not even consider it, I think that's a little short-sighted. So I'm willing to give this a chance. Will it save money? I hope so, but it is an additional benefit for our employees, and I think the convenience may be something that they're attracted to. And this is not a new concept. Bethlehem Steel was doing this 25, 30 years ago with a, with a health center to help reduce costs. So it's been done before, and it, not so much at the government level, but we'll see how it goes. And in five years, if it doesn't work, and the contract's up to rebid, then maybe council will decide that it just wasn't worth it, and we'll move on. But I just feel that it's a little short-sighted to not even try, so I'll be supporting it.
Ms. Sarinski, do you want to chime in while you're on the phone?
I am on the phone. I'm still here. I, I supported this yesterday. I have always supported this healthcare. I believe that's important to our employees. It's important to the retention of our employees and their care over the long term to prevent illness that would, you know, like cancer and things that are chronic and ultimately fatal. I think this is the best thing that we can do for our workers right now, and I'm glad Mr. Kuzic brought up the fact that the steel had this. They definitely did. It was something that steelworkers loved. I know my grandparents worked at the steel, and they were very happy with their healthcare. They lived very long lives. So I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm stoked about this for, you know, pretty much every meeting this came up, and I know, it seems like I'm against it from the start, but I've been doing everything I can to, you know, look at it as objectively as possible. But at the end of the day, I understand there's a problem, and I think there's a problem in healthcare. I think healthcare in America is systematically flawed, and we are at, I believe, the precipice of something changing, because something has to give, which means I think this is the exact wrong time to be doing something like a health center in our government facility for a number of reasons, because I, I think that it's going to be more expensive for the county as a whole when all of the costs are accrued. I think it, it inflates our government even more, which is going to give less attention to the employees that we already have, because we're going to be spread even thinner. I think we have great benefits in the county, the best benefits. I would trade my benefit package for any employee at the county, but I think our pay is not great. I think if we want to focus on our employees, I think we've all heard it, Mr. Heckman and I have talked about it many a times, they don't care as much about the benefits and the pensions, they are looking for wages. So if we want to attract better employees, I think the pay study will do just that. As far as how we get better health with our employees, I think Mr. Giovanni was spot-on. We need to do education, we need to talk about the things that are going on with people. We're addicted to sugar, we're addicted to bad diets, we're addicted to not exercising, we're addicted to soda. Why don't we start there? Why don't we use information that spending $3 million on opening up a health center when there's a number of health centers in Easton? If you go to any one of those, we could talk to Weah Valley or St. Luke and see if we can get a preferred option as a county, all our employees. There's a number of options. Mr. Barron said that this is the only option that's on the table. I disagree. I think there's many options, I think we need to be more creative in defining them. So I will not be supporting this, and I hope the rest of my council members support the idea of, different ideas for improving the healthcare for our employees.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
First, I want to say that last year, when this first came in front of us, I did have Mr. Spadoni work with me on getting an opinion from the Ethics Board. I do work for St. Luke's as an employee in New Jersey, and I wanted to make sure that any kind of deliberation I did in this was free and clear, and we did receive that last year, and I have no conflict of interest in this. That being said, and I think you still have a copy of it somewhere, I do too. We have been talking about this and this company in particular for a year, and I sit and I listen and I think, well, what has changed in that time? And last night, I listened again, and all I could think of was that we keep saying the same words and the same things over and over, and I don't get anything different, or anything that moves the goalpost for me. There's a psychological concept that if you just keep repeating things over and over and over again, eventually people believe that it's true, whether it is or not, and I have felt that for a long time with this project. Not the project per se, I think there's merits to the project, but I still don't feel like there's enough details and there's enough clarity on it. There, there have been numbers asked for, we haven't seen them. There's no site that's been revealed because it's super secret. There's no determination yet on the retirees, we learned that yesterday. There's a lot of not real numbers, from what I can understand, and numbers aren't my thing, but I just think as, you know, I look at other areas. The employees want this, the employees really want this. Okay, that's what we've been told. When we've had issues with things for the employees before, I get a barrage of phone calls, emails, trying to influence me one way or the other, and for one year, I have not received one comment from any employee about this. I have not had one person contact me and say, I really want this. No one. We got one letter from the union, and that was it, saying we support this, but not employees directly. And then yesterday, we were told, our employees all want that. Well, they're all directors who came and gave us the pitch. So, you know, we keep talking about the actuarial data, the actuarial data, it's been a year. We have never had a presentation from Blue Cross, we have never had a presentation with the actuarial data, we have never seen the progression. We've been told it's a problem, but we've never seen it, it's never been articulated. As of yesterday, the oversight plan had not been established. This is, this was stated yesterday that this is an essential service, and this is so important to our employees. So why are we turning this essential, this essential service over to people who are not really healthcare providers? I'm a healthcare provider, I work for a healthcare entity, and a lot of people bash healthcare now. So expensive, it's overpriced, blah, blah, blah. Well, maybe separate the profit makers from the real delivery people, because we're delivery people and we work really hard. We work hard to keep our credentials, we make ourselves available, we have all kinds of mechanisms internally and externally to try to get healthcare to people. We do take cases on sliding scale, on pro bono. As other people have mentioned, it's out there, and we have to work night and day to provide excellent service, and we have to keep our credentials, and, you know, we aren't concierge anything, we are dedicated professionals. And so it's been frankly insulting to hear the way this company represents healthcare. I have a problem with the company, I have a problem with the five-year mark, and I will not be supporting this.
Well, I'm the last one to speak. I've wrestled with this, and I've wrestled with it more in the last 24 hours than I've done in the last year. Whenever we've had anything like this, this place was packed, and we've had employees come here and address us. I don't see any employees of something of this magnitude, but a handful. Earlier today, my phone started blowing up, because I've heard from people who listened last night and said, I was never asked about it. Why wasn't there a second survey? I'm worried that now the county will have access to our personal health issues. All this was thrown at me this afternoon by members who work for us. And I was just, 24 hours ago, I was slam dunk, I'm going with you. But now I have to sit and I have to think about it, and I thought about it. I'm not very comfortable with it. I asked yesterday about a second survey that was never done. We did one survey, and it's a small portion of the 2,000 people that we have working for us. With that said, I'm just going to say it right now, and then we're going to call for the vote. I will not be supporting this. Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Gofredo.
No.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
No.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Fails by a vote of four to five.
Do we have any other new business that needs to be discussed at this time, council members? Council Committee reports. Mr. Heckman, I'm sure you had a meeting yesterday, and Ms. Vargo Hefner did.
Why don't you do your personnel and then I'll do my finance?
I, I did personnel yesterday, the fruits of our labor, we just walked out the door as the new controller, and we also had a And we also had a governance committee meeting yesterday where we discussed the DA as well as heard a presentation from the Conservation District, some concerns that they have and they would like us to review and address. And the only other committee announcement I have is that I have asked to cancel the human services meeting for the first week of August. If we really need one, we can consider it later in the month.
Follow, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, personnel, yeah, I just had a follow-up. Mr. Parsons, is he currently a county pensioner? Okay, so.
He's going to have to suspend.
He will have to suspend his pension then in order to.
You're right, yeah.
To take the office. So if we could get, get him that information, I think, I don't know, I don't know if he knows that or not, but I think that needs to be conveyed.
We'll make sure he gets, he gets told about that. Okay. Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, finance, we, well, we voted on all of it. And so that's what we did. And it, we, we did the contracts and if, Mr. President, may I just say something?
You sure can.
I think for the good of the order, this has been a difficult, I, I've been through difficult discussions. I was here when we did 911. And if you wanted to see packed chambers, you should have been here for the 911 discussions. I call it the 911 wars. And one side of the room cheering, the other side booing, depending on what somebody said. Decisions are always easy if you don't have to make them. And I think that council as a whole, I've found that for the most part, always takes these things very seriously. And whether I'm on the winning side or the losing side, I have and I continue to respect the wishes of, of council members. That's why nine people are the seat of county government as opposed to one person. But so I just wanted to say, I, I, I think that's important to say sometimes because I know people get upset. I, my back is so hard now, it's like a turtle shell. But, you know, by getting attacked and for different things and that. But that's the job. And I would say if you can do a better job, run for office.
Any other council members reports? Council A zone? Go ahead, Tara.
So I went to the LDEDC, the Lehigh Valley Economic Committee. And I was very impressed. A lot is going on in the Lehigh Valley. They, there's $2.6 million that could potentially come to the Lehigh Valley through the IAMC National Conference. We're trying to get that here at Wind Creek, which is great for tourism, great for hotel tax. Something else that came up was the hotel tax in general, which I thought was interesting because there's a new hotel going out by the airport. We have the Valley International Airport and there's some discussion on whether or not Northampton County will get any hotel tax from that, even though it's in Allen Town, but it's a regional thing. So a lot of our discussions now are about regionalization. And I know that historically, when, when Creek went in, there was some conversation about who would get hotel tax for that. And apparently Lehigh, Lehigh County does. So I hope that we can pull, you get that hotel tax from the airport as well. We, the CHIPS Act came out, this is about technology, and we're applying for Phase One to be a tech hub. If we get that designation to Phase One is August 15th for that application. Phase Two, it puts us in the running for funding, that could be five to $10 million a project. So we have three tech prospects, all in the semiconductor field. And then they did an, they did an audit and also they talked about population changes. And it's very interesting that Norco is growing in the 18 to 24-year-old range. So this is a population that's well sought after for industries because, you know, everybody likes young talent, the talent. So very interesting meeting. The Lehigh Valley En commission Executive Board met this afternoon. I don't know if Mr., the county executives discussed it already, but they're talking about the different projects that they're doing, doing the climate action plan and also the water study, air pollution expansion studies and, and a lot more in, in that session. So very interesting going on regional in Northampton County. Thank you.
Sorry. I attended the Discover Lehigh Valley Board last week. There's an event next Tuesday at Zest. I forget the time, I'll get it to Linda. It's a kickoff of one of their projects. I think it's 3:30 to 5:30. But occupancy is still strong in the valley, although I think we dropped it in one number to Chester County, but we're still at the top in the state. And, you know, most of our money and focus is on branding, but it feels like we're getting the return on the investment for what we're putting out. And it's just nice to see all the different events that we have. They talked a lot about the, the race that's coming as well. So I can't remember the.
Viva?
The V, the, it's not Viva, but it's the DNL in St. Luke's now.
The one that Johnson's happy about.
I call it my friend Kevin's race because he runs in it every year. So, you know, that's, that's how I think of it. But I, I mean, it's just, it's very interesting and it's something that I don't do as a regular matter, of course, but it's always interesting to see how much tourism really does impact the area.
Okay. Anybody else? Council clerk?
Nothing.
Solicitor?
Nothing. No report.
Thank you, sir. Before we adjourn, I just want to take a moment. This was a very tough decision that we all made today. I have the utmost respect for all, all of us, all nine of us who sit here. The one thing good about this is when we make a decision and we walk out of this room, we all remain friends. And that's more important to me than anything else. You know, I respect you guys to the highest and I hope that we have a friendship that will endure time. With that said, to all my fellow councilmen, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion.
Let's get out of here.
Second.